Good evening, Wakefield. I call to order the meeting of October 7th, 2024 of the Wakefield Town Council at 7:02 PM. I would ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Have you seen the flag?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. O attendance, we have two councilors unable to be with us tonight, Council John Carney and Vice Chair Dembrowski. The other five councilors representing the forum are in the building. I'll entertain a motion that we would have a, we would need a motion for a public hearing, correct?
Yes, we do.
Yep. I'll entertain a motion that we enter into a public hearing relative to the liquor license of Caparali's Fine Wines and Spirits.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor? Public hearing is open. Town Administrator, you have something on this?
I will turn it over to Sherri. Sherri handles our licenses, and I think we do have a person online to represent the applicant.
Excellent.
Yep, we do. We have John Meridian online representing the applicant. Hi, John, can you hear?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, Attorney John Meridian, Democus Law Offices. I'm here on behalf of 29 Broadway, Wakefield LLC. They're purchasing Caparali's Fine Wine and Spirits, looking at 29 Broadway, and we're seeking approval tonight from the Town Council for the transfer of the all-alcohol liquor license to remain at the same location, approval of Ruchi Patel as the manager of record, and a pledge of the licensed inventory to Northern Bacon Trust Company. My clients are buying the business. It's a change in business ownership. There's no changes to the store footprint. It's going to remain the same location. Ruchi is tip certified. We have three to four employees who are tip certified. She's completed the fingerprint requirement with the town police, and I've advised them to use an ID point-of-sale scanning system to help combat underage sales. Store hours will continue to be 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays, and then Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So with that, I welcome any questions that the council may have.
Before we get to that, Sherri, is everything in order?
Everything is in order, yes.
Any questions from the councilors? Seeing none, I would entertain-
Maybe any questions from the public?
Ah, do we have any public? Nobody in the building. Sherri, do you have anybody public online that has any questions?
We have nobody wishing to speak for public comment on the liquor license.
Okay. Apparently no public comment. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the liquor license transfer for Caparali's Fine Wine and Spirits on Broadway.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much, Counselor, for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And best of luck to your clients.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Five zero, Sherri. The public meeting is closed. Sherri, do we have any public engagement this evening?
We, oh, yeah, a last-minute hand just went up from Julie.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, just can't see you.
Okay. Now can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Hi, Julie Scott, Central Street. In May of 2023, I and a couple of the members of the Town Committee met with the Town Administrator because we wanted to talk about qualifications for candidates to our committee, and we asked if an applicant or a member could live outside of Wakefield. We were told that non-residents could hold advisory positions, but they could not vote on any matters. With this in mind, on September 19th of this year, I spoke during public participation at the Economic Development Council meeting, and my point to be made that night was that two members were not in advisory positions and they don't live in Wakefield, but they were allowed to be voting members of that committee, and they were voting and spending taxpayer funds and helping to plan to spend ARPA funds. The, I had just learned at that meeting also that those, that two members had just recently been sworn in despite being appointed last fall, and in the handbook it states that all committee members have to be sworn in by the town clerk before they can vote on any matter that is brought in front of the committee, and then in the handbook it also states that failure to comply will result in the revoking of the appointment letter. So on September 20th, the next day, when I looked at the handbook to check what it said, I actually noticed that it had been suddenly revised that morning, and there was a change in it that said on page 28, it was altered, that all candidates must be a resident. It added that it was unless otherwise determined by a vote of the Town Council or required by state law. But the day before, and posted since April of 2023, it just said you had to be a town resident. So it had been changed overnight. I watched the November 2023 Town Council meeting, and approximately 35 minutes into the meeting, there was no mention of the candidates that were appointed that night to the EDC not being Wakefield residents. There wasn't any comment about they were Wakefield residents. Because nobody else applied, I heard. I heard that there was no question of residency because it was clearly required and stated in multiple town venues, especially on the EDC's very own town application. The council voted through all the nine applicants. In the bylaws, it says that on the Board of Appeals, you have to be a registered voter in the town of Wakefield. The permanent building committee applicants must be residents of Wakefield, and it says that for the Finance Committee, no person holding an elected town office shall be eligible to serve on the Finance Committee. But that actually means if you're not holding, if you're not a registered, if you are not an elected town official, you actually could live outside of Wakefield. So I'm concerned about what this change does to the bylaws and how the bylaws connect to the Town Handbook. So I've got two suggestions. Maybe we'll just go back to the way it was, and people can serve in advisory positions and not vote if they're going to be serving the town of Wakefield and aren't residents of Wakefield. But I, my first suggestion is methods used by Town Hall to keep track of mandatory swearing-in of the appointees, and the required conflict of interest training completion must be updated. And I also hope that the sudden change to the Town Handbook did require a process, and I ask the process to start now, that the Town Council and the Bylaw Review Committee go through all the committees and all the different councils and boards, and make sure that the language is consistent, and it's something that everybody can agree to. I know personally, if people are voting to spend my tax dollars and the ARPA funds that are awarded to Wakefield, I would like them to be Wakefield locals. If they're not, we could certainly use as many advisors as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Town Administrator, could you give us your understanding of our current policy?
Sure. Our current policy is that the Town Council, there is no statutory requirement, except in certain instances, that people have to be town residents, but that certainly has been the policy of the Town Council. The EDC was a one-off because we did want to include business residents, I guess for lack of a better word. I think every Town Councilor who reviewed the package certainly knew that certain people that were appointed were not residents of Wakefield. Maybe it wasn't discussed, but I think everyone certainly knew that. The employee handbook is our document, meaning Town Administration. When this, meaning that we've done it, the Town Council has seen it, but the Town Council does not, did not adopt it or approve it. We just, you know, I forwarded it, took your comments, and then we sent it to committee appointees to help them to get into it, to help the community members. So we did make those changes based on the action that the Town Council had done regarding the EDC. EDC was not in, even a committee, when I did tell Ms. Scott that, you know, members needed to be members of the town of Wakefield, that committee, because that's what we did. That was our practice. So we made those changes. I think that we do a pretty good job, and we're doing it much better of streamlined and making sure people come in and get sworn in. I will say, as far as the EDC is concerned, the, any vote that did not have a quorum of non, did not have a quorum of sworn-in members has been or will be revoked, and I already sent that out to them. I think there were two votes in that entire time that needed to be done. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Okay. Counselor, John?
Thank you, Matt, Mr. Chair. Just to add some context, you know, back in, I think this was probably the summer of 2020, Counselor Dembrowski, then Counselor Smith Galvin and I had worked, we were the subcommittee that put together the Charter of the Economic Development Council, and this was an issue, residents or non-residents, that we did talk about very explicitly, because there was this longstanding tradition that we had residents only serve on committees. You know, we ultimately recommended to the council, and the council in 2020, when we approved the creation of the EDC, even though we didn't fill the positions for a few years, agreed that it made sense to have this available, this participation of non-residents because of the number of stakeholders that, you know, are involved in the business community. So I do want to just kind of clarify, this isn't something that was an oversight, and it wasn't something that wasn't kind of well-considered. It was a very active part of the conversation that certainly the three councilors that wrote the charter, and then fundamentally the whole council when we approved it had at the time.
Thank you. Any other councilors have comments or additions? Okay. That being said, I believe we can move on unless we have any, do we have any other public participation? Sheriff?
No, we are all set personally.
Okay. Then we will go to Item 6, Presentation. Item 80 of 6 is Town Council 40A Subcommittee Proposal. Before we introduce our well-known senior planner, I would entertain comments from any of the members of the subcommittee who are here tonight. Being one, I will simply say that we did have a short timeframe. As I mentioned in our June meeting, our second June meeting, I had a certain idea of what the compromise plan might look like. People have asked me whether I was involved or whether our senior planner did all this on her own. That wasn't, that wasn't the case. We were involved as a subcommittee all the way through. We had multiple meetings. We had two public forum, forums or fora, if you prefer the Latin, Steve, and-
I think fora was correct.
And we had public participation at every single meeting. We listened to people, we listened to their concerns, their comments. We did a survey that garnered, I believe, over 850 responses in the middle of the summer. I would say that that's unheard of. But we're not done. We're not done in terms of public outrage as we move forward in this process. It is a compromise plan. Having served the better part of my 41-year career in compromise of all different sorts and resolution of compromises, I would say that that is what a compromise is. It is a mutually disagreeable solution. It is not going to make anybody necessarily happy. It may not make someone who thought this should be more residential-based happy. It certainly won't make people, and there were many who have come to us and said, and I respect their opinion, that they wish to vote no regardless of whatever compromise plan we put out there. I respect their opinion, and my hope, however, is that we've crafted something that will at least be arguably acceptable to the legislative body at this time, which is town meeting. That's all I have to say. Present, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. First of all, I want to thank Erin Kikenda for her meticulous work on this project throughout 2023 and the first half of 2024, and I want to thank Sam Elliott for her exemplary work over the past few months on this time sensitive project. Concerning the process, I want to note that since noncompliance with MBTA 40A 3A by December 31st can result in a lawsuit, and Wakefield Bylaw 56-1 states that the Town Council should have the authority to prosecute, defend, and compromise all litigation to which the town is a party, the Town Council established the MBTA 40A 3A Subcommittee on June 24th, 2024, to handle this matter and produce a plan for the fall town meeting. Over the past 100 days, the Subcommittee conducted a survey, held five meetings, and two public hearings. That is an average of a hearing or a meeting every 15 days. I thank the multitude of Wakefield residents who completed the survey and attended the public hearings, both in person and virtually, and I commend Chairman McLean for allowing residents to ask as many questions as they had and feel like that they were being heard at the public hearings. Concerning the work product, I'd like to touch very briefly on the bylaw. I compliment the draft bylaw. I compliment Sam for taking the lead and creating an excellent bylaw. Additionally, Mr. Mullin, Mr. Mayo, and the three Subcommittee Town Council members reviewed and edited the draft bylaw that we are presenting to you tonight. That means that five attorneys with a combined 175 years of legal experience worked on this bylaw. You can refer to us as Sam and the five barristers. Concerning the financial impact analysis, especially grants affected by noncompliance, recognizing that a tremendous amount of work had to be completed in a very short period of time, the Subcommittee did not simply direct the Town Administrator to assess the financial impact associated with noncompliance. Rather, some of us had individually rolled up our sleeves and conducted our own research regarding grants, especially educational grants, because this is an all-hands-on-deck matter. In conclusion, I am proud how the Subcommittee has worked closely with Steve and Sam, engaged with the public, and has been open and transparent throughout the process. To do otherwise would have been a dereliction of duty. Thank you.
I turn this over. If Town Administrator doesn't have anything to add, I would turn it over to our senior planner, Samantha Elliott.
So we'll review the proposed districts and kind of some of the basic ins and outs of the bylaw, and then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Just so you know that there is in front of you a list of the different grants that will be impacted should you have, the town end up in a state of noncompliance. And there are grants, seems at this point, being added regularly to that list, and there was also a new grant that came out, which is called the MBTA Communities Catalyst Fund that is, it has a wide variety of different potential projects that it can be applied to, but it is only for communities that have an approved MBA, MBTA Communities bylaw. So with that, I'll go over ours. So the potential districts, how did we get there? We've, the Subcommittee has done a great job of collaborating with the public. They've not only held meetings, but they also, we put together a survey and got 852 responses in, yes, July and August. So we have had a lot of public feedback also through emails, and then they've held two public forums to get feedback in a general sense, and then also on specific maps. The guidance that was gained through all of this public collaboration allowed us to put together a new map with new locations, understand if offsite was desired, and then also support for character areas, and I'll get into that a little bit more down the line. So MBTA in Wakefield looks like, or what does compliance look like? We've got a new district and a new bylaw. So it's completely different than what was proposed in the spring, from the zoning parameters to the character areas to the heights and densities, it's completely different. And really, again, reflected a lot of the public comment that we had had over that 100-ish days that the Subcommittee was, was working on this. In Wakefield, our minimums for the goal to be compliant with MBTA Communities, Chapter 40, Section 3A, was a minimum of 36 acres, a minimum of 1,696 units, a minimum of 15 units per acre, and 75% of whatever district we come up with, which would be 27 acres, needs to be within that half-mile radius around the three different stations that have the radiuses, or radii, in Wakefield, which is the Wakefield Station at North Ave, Greenwood, and then we have a little point, small area, at the southernmost point of Wakefield for Melrose Highlands. And it allowed up to 25% offsite. So those were things that we looked at and put together a proposed variety of different maps, again, with different character areas, which I'll get to in just a moment. So there's North Ave, which would be a mixed-use area, so that's why there's an asterisk next to it. Two stories of residential on top of one floor of commercial. Currently, there are 83 residential units in that area. Under 3A, if it were completely built out, it would be a maximum of 156 units. On Audubon, which is where Colonial Point Apartment Building is currently, it's that actual site. It is proposed under MBTA Communities to be 10 stories, allow a maximum of 418 units. Currently, there are 176 units, and again, that site is completely built out because of wetlands and hydrology and a number of different other excluded parts, excluded components under MBTA Communities. And the only way that this could be built out to this maximum capacity is if it were demolished in a kind of, or had some sort of catastrophic event. And the current structure is actually 12 stories, not 10, so this is actually reducing potential impact. Greenwood is kind of that neighborhood commercial area. It is two stories with the option of a three-story building if there is a first-floor commercial space. Currently, there are only 89 units down there. It's mostly just single-story commercial structures that's in that district, and I'll be showing maps in detail, but I just wanted to go over this real quick first. And the potential, if completely built out, would be a maximum of 323 units. Albion is that area between, technically between Foster and North Ave. It does not go all the way over to Main Street. It would be the same thing as Greenwood, first floor, option of first-floor commercial, but if they're not a mixed-use building, it would only be two stories in height. There's currently 70 units in that area. Under 3A, 50 would be the maximum of what could be developed. The reason why there are more units is because there are some, a lot on Foster Street, there is a larger multi, I think it's about five-stories building that is included in that district. And on Foundry, which is the area, I know many were asking for us to look at last time, that area is mostly built out with, I think, one or two parcels that could still potentially be built. And so the current density, or the current number of units is 458, which does not include permitted projects. There are 65, about 65 more units for projects that are currently under construction that will be added to that number, and the maximum that could be built in that area is under 775. Now, that's if the, every single property was completely demolished. That does not mean that there can be five additional stories on top of Grayson Lofts. The maximum height in that area is five stories. So with that, I will get into the map. So along North Avenue, this particular area is what's considered or referred to by EOH LLC as a mandatory mixed-use area. That means if somebody wants to redevelop any of these parcels, they have to do commercial on the first floor and then residential on the top two floors above that. The maximum height in this area is three stories.
And that was important because we wanted to keep the commercial character. When you look down that corridor, most of that area is commercial in nature now, so we wanted to make sure that was commercial.
Right. And you want to try to make sure that there's commercial space on the first floor to keep it online and engaged with the pedestrian, as well as providing services for the residents that live in that area and those that live in the surrounding community in Wakefield. And so I'm happy to go over parking too, down the line, if anybody is curious about that for the different districts.
Can I just ask a quick factual question on that? The statistics, that represents current state, not the future state under the new zoning?
Correct. Correct. That's what I was just about to get to. So this, that's okay. You're just excited, I guess. I'm happy to share. The way I went on residency, which anybody can go to, it's access, it's accessible by the public, and did a little overlay of what our proposed, the Subcommittee's proposed district is over what is there currently. The darker buildings are, the darker the site, the higher the density. So what this chart actually shows is what the current density is, as well as it breaks down the current uses. So you have condos, apartments, mixed-use, two-family, commercial, tax-exempt. There is some property that's owned in there that I believe is church property, as well as some accessory land with improvement, which I'm not entirely certain which parcel that is. But right now, it's primarily all commercial, and if it were to go completely to residential, which is what the area was included in the previous plan, you would lose that commercial, not just the commercial tax base, but the commercial engagement on the first floor. And so the way that the bylaw is written, and it's already been, we did consult with the state to confirm that this was compliant with their mandatory mixed-use regulations, that the first floor would have to be commercial in order for them to build anything in this area. And then the density is 30 units per acre in this particular, 30 or 33 units per, I don't know what I did, I'm sorry. I just turned it off. And, oh, it's back. Okay. I'm going to be very careful with this thing now. Okay. Well, let me just double-check. Do you have any questions about North Ave before I go to the next one?
Just a quick question. Does this, you know, the new bylaw or the new way we're proposing this, this eliminates, like, those two, two families couldn't automatically then convert to a four-family? They would have to follow the first-floor commercial and two, two floors of residential above?
Correct. Nothing can, no, there is not a single property located in this particular district that could be converted to just residential. If they do anything, unless they fall back on whatever standard zoning is, which we don't have for family under standard zoning, if they were to opt into MBTA Communities, they would have to redevelop in alignment with what's, I mean, provided the bylaw is approved, they would have to construct a project by right and stay within the parameters that's under MBTA Communities. Any other questions before I go to the next district? Okay. So the next area is Audubon Road, which we refer to as the high-rise, I believe it's high-rise residential, under here. Yeah. So this particular area is, has the tallest height restriction of any of the areas that's within the overlay, and the way that it's set up is that they're all, if you, I don't know if you have a copy of the bylaw, but the way that it's written in the bylaw is that there's a very clear chart to try to make it very accessible and easy for anybody to be able to understand. This area, you could do up to 10 stories or 57, no, it says 120 feet, which is, again, less than what's there currently. It's currently 12 stories. It would still have to meet all of the parking requirements on-site. It would still have to be cognizant of the wetlands, which you see, there's a lot of wetlands that are impacted by this area, and have to meet all of those other components. So this area is what we call our offsite location. It allows us to stick 25%, or up to 25% of the required minimum units, which is the 1,696 offsite, so that we can pull some of that out of the downtown area. This particular area has access to 95. It also has access to amenities over at the marketplace in Linfield, along Audubon, and I can't think of what that road is. But anyway, that is one of the other sites that's, again, included in this iteration.
Can I ask you a question about Audubon?
Yeah, sure.
Since that's the newer area. A couple of months ago, the group working on the open space plan came in front of us, and they talked about the EJ areas that we had in town, environmental justice areas, and this was one of them. And just, was there any discussion in the group about what that means as we're building more housing in this area and how that would play into an area that is already at an environmental, economic, like, injustice in our town?
Yeah. So this particular area, while it is, it is part of the overlay, it wouldn't just readily be redeveloped, nor would the density increase. I have not had conversations with them because the bylaw had just come out. I haven't had the opportunity to go to Conservation Commission to get explicit feedback from them, but they are aware of, a number of people have had this forwarded to them to at least be able to start reviewing it, and I will be collecting those prior to town meetings so that, the comments, so that everybody has the opportunity to have some direct feedback, but I'm happy to reach out to them specifically on that component.
Yeah, I'd love some just consideration about that.
Oh, absolutely.
Because this is a new area, and we talked about-
Because this is a new area, and we talked about it a couple of months ago, as being one of the two?
Two?
Three. Two economic, environmental justice areas we have in town. So I'd love to just have some consideration about that, is where, I totally get a bylaw, I understand that it doesn't mean we're going to build 10-story buildings, but how does that interact with what we're trying to do about cleaning up our environmental justice areas in town?
Yeah, sure. And just as a side note, too, whatever is built under MBTA Communities is done by right. So it is required to meet all of the other components of various review processes, including Conservation Commission, wetlands, hydrology, and various, there's a number of different setbacks on this parcel. It's actually really only the kind of southern, southwesternmost portion, kind of where the parking lot and that, I don't know, a portion of the building, not the entire kind of V-shaped building, that could be developed under MBTA Communities, because they can't have all of the variances and additional public hearing processes that would have additional restrictions. They have to be able to do something by right. So that's part of why they have all of these additional overlays, and those areas cannot be, to be built in. Okay. The next district is Greenwood, and this is down at that main intersection of Greenwood, Main, and Oak. This map is slightly off because it does include the fire station. The fire station's not supposed to be in it. But I didn't update it because I wanted you to have a same one, the same presentation as you had looked at previously. So the, this particular area is a neighborhood commercial character area. It's a smaller commercial node that services the surrounding community. It has a primarily commercial build-out currently, but does have the potential for adding additional mixed-use buildings up and down north, I'm sorry, up and down Main Street. There is one currently at the corner of Greenwood Street and Main Street in the northwest corner. That is a single-story of commercial space with two stories of residential on top. It's a gray building, if you're over there. So it's not entirely foreign to this area in the current environment. So in looking at what's there currently, you can see a variety of different colors on your map, which reflects the different densities for residential development in the area. So there is some residential currently, about 89 units. Again, if every single thing were to be built out at maximum capacity, and there, of course, like I had mentioned before, they still have parking requirements that they need to meet and a number of other setbacks, and lot coverage, and height maximums and whatnot. The maximum under MBTA Communities, their formula is 323 units. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions about Greenwood, if anybody has any, before I go to the next.
So, and I don't know if this is in another slide, but you mentioned there's another piece of Greenwood kind of further down towards Melrose Highlands. Is that part of this parcel, or is that separate?
No, so that's, that's one of the three districts, the three areas around train stations, the radii that we have to work with. We chose to stick to Greenwood.
Okay, got it.
And the other ones, we did not include Melrose Highlands.
Got it. I must have misunderstood you when you said something about that earlier.
Yeah, so that particular, the reason, I can explain just really quickly why Melrose Highlands wasn't looked at. The existing area that's located within the radii is primarily single-family or possibly two-family residential. And the request from the surveys, the public forums, the emails, the public meetings we've gotten was to try to keep it out of the existing residential and to not impact those lower-density residential areas, and to try to see if we could focus on the commercial character areas. And there is a small commercial strip down between Greenwood and the Melrose Line, but unfortunately, that's actually in the little kind of crack.
Kind of between.
Yeah, right where that entire strip, I think there's maybe half a building that's actually located within one of the half-mile radii. So it just didn't make a lot of sense for us to look at that, at least for this iteration. They were trying to put together something that really reflected a lot of the comment. And there was a big push from the public to be able to include Greenwood, which has not had as much redevelopment as kind of the Foundry-North Ave area. So there was a request to include this as part of it.
I would just add, too, that it also got tough, because anytime, like, if you would have considered something in the southernmost part of Greenwood, well, you still have to have a 50% contiguous area.
Yep.
So there's a lot of mow-whacking that goes on.
Yep.
Where if you put something here.
How do you connect all the lines?
How do you connect all the lines for the 50%, which quite clearly had to be around Wakefield Station?
Yep.
Practically speaking.
And every time something got adjusted, it would throw something else off, or it impacts the 25% that you can do offsite. And so we were trying to, to keep everything consolidated, but also still, still meet the intent of MBTA Communities.
Do we know is Melrose Highlands, is Melrose doing theirs by the Melrose Highlands Station?
I do not know off the top of my head.
No, I just wasn't sure, like, if that whole area gets developed and then it's, like, our little slip that's not.
They, I believe that theirs are, the, that is residential, more, lower density residential up those streets and into kind of where the radius goes into Wakefield. I believe, last I looked, that their stuff was, their proposed districts were very concentrated around their stations to be more of the mixed-use, kind of taller residential buildings. And I'd have to go back and look at what the exact proposed boundaries or what theirs are, if they're approved. But last I looked, they were not including anything that was butting up against our shared, yeah, sure.
Whether it's related to 48 or not, there is a four-story going up right by the Melrose Highlands Station right now. Residential, apparently residential building.
I think Wyoming also had one built recently, or is just finished or just about to be finished. Okay, so one of the other areas was Albion Street. This captures a lot of the existing commercial. There's a little bit of residential, again, I'm going to pop over to the density map. You can see with the darker buildings, those are existing residential developments. The one at the corner of, what is it, Richmond, I think, and Foster? Is a, is that five-story building. So there's more density there. But there's a lot of potential for mixed-use structures to maintain that commercial first-floor engagement and then have the two stories of residential use on top and allow that area to be occupied and utilized at another, or a higher, higher density than what's there currently. But again, there are, you can see from this map that there already are a number of residential uses in the area. Most of those are not mixed-use.
Samantha, to be clear for the council, in this particular street, it could be residential without the commercial?
So, yes, this particular area is not the mandatory mixed-use like North Ave is. This area could be two-story residential, or it can be three stories with a mixed-use component. The way that that is incentivized is the same way it's incentivized in the mandatory mixed-use area. The commercial has a zero parking requirement. And then there's 1.5 spaces that are required for residential. And that's in keeping with most of what is going on already downtown.
So, a quick question, because we're over the residential, does that mean that people, it's not, we're not precluded from going above the 70? Like, if somebody wants to redevelop their building and build?
No, this is effectively like the number of units we get credit for.
Okay.
So that's because Foster, the one at the corner.
Yeah. It's very concentrated.
Right over here. This particular one couldn't be rebuilt under MBTA Communities, so it would have a lower density than what is there currently. You can, a property developer or owner can either opt into the MBTA Communities overlay and develop under that, or they can choose to go back under standard code and go through special permit process, if they really want to go through something larger like that, and roll the dice, see what happens.
I just wouldn't want to disadvantage owners if we've already got that overbuilt.
Right.
I wouldn't want to disadvantage them from being able to convert there, you know, if they've got, you know, there's a couple there that are one stories that are not.
Right, so a great example is on the corner, right, oh, at Foster, right there, you have the Wakefield item. If the Wakefield item at some point in time moves out of the area, there is the first floor that is commercial space and could maintain its commercial use, and then you could have up to two stories of residential on top of that. Whether they chose to keep the existing building or demolish it and build something new is, there's a lot of different factors that go into that. But I've seen a wide variety of different types of development in my various capacities, in different positions that I've had over the years, dealing both with smaller historic district areas and downtowns, as well as larger areas. So that's a potential site that could go from a one-story building to a three-story building and revitalize or add some revitalization, some new construction, and potentially more online, first-floor engagement with the public through a mixed-use structure. Any questions before I go to the next district? Okay. So the last area, I think it's the last area, is Foundry Street. And this is covering most of what, you can see from this aerial, most of what's already developed. It's trying to maintain that existing development pattern, trying to match the existing character area. There's a couple of different lots that are still able to be developed, one of which is on the corner right here at Albion Street and the train station. It's, I believe, a pool story.
North shore pools, yep. We're familiar with it, unfortunately.
If, if down the line, they, that's, whether the owner or another owner were to come in or someone were to come in and purchase the property, would like to develop it, they would be subject to the regulations and to maintain the consistency of what's in the area. They do have the option of doing mixed-use, as there's a mixed-use development going on just down the street at, what is that, the corner of, I can't see. Lake Street right here and Albion. There's a mixed-use building with about 10 units going in currently. It's under construction. And it'll have the commercial first floor, and then it has residential above it. So there's an option for either complete residential or this mixed-use to, again, provide some online engagement for the pedestrian in the area, as well as the ability for some of these buildings to serve the residents with kind of everyday, everyday retail business type needs. This particular area would not exceed five stories in height, which equates to about 57 feet. And it has, in the bylaw, there's regulations, again, on lot coverage, so it can't have 100% lot coverage. You're still going to have a parking requirement of 1.5 spaces per unit, and similar setbacks to what is there currently, what's currently being developed. So the, and here, again, is the residential. It's fairly dense currently and has a number of different units and buildings that have been redeveloped. So the overlay as proposed, the bylaw includes character areas. And character areas are part of what allows us to have all of these different height restrictions and these different use restrictions under one overlay and one bylaw. It allows you to maintain whatever the existing development patterns are in these various areas, and that, that's the existing character. That's the term "character areas." So what we're looking at for this bylaw, we have the industrial loft character area, which is on Foundry. So looking at primarily doing the commercial first floor if somebody chooses to, or the residential development that's similar to what is already being built there. There's the, it says high-density here, but it ended up getting changed to high-rise residential character area, which is off of Audubon, which, again, has a much higher open space requirement, as it needs to be cognizant of the wetlands and watershed area around there. There's the commercial character, or the neighborhood character area, neighborhood commercial, which is on Albion and Greenwood. So those are the neighborhood, kind of, you know, commercial centers, commercial nodes that service those surrounding areas and those who actually live in the mixed-use buildings. And then there's that mandatory mixed-use character area, which is, in the bylaw, referred to as the North Ave mixed-use district. So that's a quick overview. Just to, again, give you some visuals, if you don't remember what, what some of the buildings in the industrial loft character area is. Here's Grayson Lofts. And this, again, is actually taller than what could be built under the overlay. The overlay only goes up to five feet or 57, I'm sorry, five stories or 57 feet. So it will have a limitation. You have this five-story Foundry Lofts, which is just south of Grayson Lofts, and it's built out, but would be very similar to what could potentially be built there. In the high-rise residential character area, you have Colonial Point, which, again, is 12 stories tall. It's not something that you could build back at the same height, but it would be a similar density. And it would be actually slightly farther away from the wetlands if it were rebuilt. The mixed-use character area, which is the North Ave, and then the neighborhood commercial character area, is what's on Water Street. I mean, it's similar to this building that's on Water Street. So you have the commercial on the first floor with storefront and glass to engage the public, allow them to see inside, be invited inside if it's, you know, a commercial use, like a restaurant or retail. And then you have the residential component on top. And again, there's still parking requirements for all of this. Another potential option is if somebody were looking to build just residential. This is one way, just kind of giving a visual. These are technically three 50-foot-wide lots, which are fairly traditional of kind of more historic neighborhoods or older neighborhoods. And there are three different six- and eight-unit buildings here. They're smaller units, so they are studios to one-bedrooms. And then there's also studio duplexes in the back. But just to try to give you a visual of some various, this is an article on microhousing, but it does kind of, I think, paint a really good picture of the various different types of what that could look like. You could have that six units, which is, again, tied to what you would find in our density on one lot. And this is at absolute max capacity and probably wouldn't meet the required parking, but does give you, again, just an idea of what could be built. If it's just residential and somebody's not doing like a traditional flat-front apartment building. Do you all have any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and the work that went into this, both to you and to Aaron Kukenda, because I know it's been a long, it's been a long, long journey for everyone, and there's been a lot of efforts to get there. I have some thoughts, which I'll share for later, but just a couple of questions I wanted to ask first. First of all, have we had the opportunity to kind of vet this plan with, with the state? I know, you know, in the past, we've kind of shared some details and gotten feedback about, you know, what they thought would be compliant and not. Have we had the chance to do that with, with this particular plan? And is, if not, is there an opportunity to do so before town meeting?
There is an opportunity to have some additional comments on it, but we won't have a full vetting like we did the previous iteration. This bylaw is based on the previous bylaw, which was approved by the state.
Okay.
So we at least use the same foundation. We did have a number of different conversations, as well as formal approval for the mandatory mixed-use district on North Ave. So that component of it is in compliance. And again, most of the language that's located in the bylaws, either from a previous one or from others that have been approved, as well as has been reviewed by our consultant, who has had other town bylaws or municipal bylaws approved for MBTA Communities. We've gone over it numerous times on Zoom to kind of make sure that the wording is in compliance and that we're not trying to push for anything that's too out, you know, outlandish or, or for some reason would cause some, some issues with the state.
Okay, so we do have a high degree of confidence that, you know, what we've put together, if town meeting does pass, it would be considered compliant with the MBTA Communities Act?
Yes.
Great. The second question, I know this wasn't in the presentation, but in the bylaw, we talked about site plan review. And I was wondering if you can kind of talk through that and sort of what, you know, what we are permitted to kind of do and not do during site plan review, right? Because, you know, you've got this sort of by-right requirement under MBTA Communities. One of the things that, you know, we like about the fact that, you know, in the current area, we have, you know, kind of special permit requirements, is that it allows us to do, you know, some review and have the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Planning Board or the Conservation Commission kind of, you know, make some suggestions there. Where does site plan review fit in within that kind of continuum of, you know, what we can and can't review for sort of specific, or what we can and can't approve for sort of specific uses, buildings, designs, et cetera, for, for any of these parcels?
Sure. So the bylaw has some components of design built into it. So it does talk about, there is a minimum, depending on what character area it is, and if there's a mixed-use component, there's a requirement for the active use on the ground floor. So it can't just be a 50% lobby and then a very small doctor's office, which is not really an engaged active use. So that's one thing that is kind of helping to regulate the use and the components on the first floor. There's also a fenestration requirement, so you can't have just a solid wall and then just a glass door and say that, oh, well, this is mixed-use, because that's not, again, engaging the public. And they're, they're different for each character area. And then there's also a different for each character area. And then there's also a restriction on the length of a continuous facade. So, you can't just have a very big, long, solid wall. You have to break it up with kind of variations in the wall plane, either recessing it or pulling it out, adding fenestration details, doors, storefronts, glass windows, you know, the like. So, that kind of helps to get some of those, I think, some of those concerns that a lot of people have. Additionally, through the site plan review process, what is reviewed is for compliance with the bylaw and with any other departments that are not listed in here. So, conservation is not listed in here. It will still have to meet all of the requirements for setbacks and open area, and your required setback from wetlands and having those, those buffer areas. You still have buffers for parking requirement. All of those components are going to be reviewed under site plan review. And if they're non-compliant with something, then they have to either go and amend it, or they can't build. The site plan review is really to verify that it's meeting all the different entities that need to have their kind of review in their hands on it, to make sure that it's compliant as proposed. It can't have, I mean, it could end up coming out with conditions, but they're not more aggressive than what is in current code.
So, sort of different than the special permit process. There's effectively no sort of discretionary authority that we're giving, like, the ZBA or the Planning Board on site plan review. It's, you know, here, here's sort of the text of the bylaw. This process is to assure that what you're proposing actually meets that, that text.
Right. Yeah, there's not really the same kind of approve or deny can kind of, I mean, it's more, it's much more black and white, either you're, yeah, you're approving or denying versus here are all these conditional things that we'd like to do as a trade-off. There is still the ability for them to go through the special permit process if they choose to, because, like, let's say, North Ave, you could do up to five stories under the special permit process. You can only do three stories under MBTA communities. And so, what's your, you know, you have, a developer's going to have to look at how it pencils out and what trade-off.
Yep.
That, you know, if it ends up taking them an additional six months to go through the special permit process, it might be a better choice for them to just build something that's more in scale with the community and not have to go through that process, but still has to meet all of the letter of the law with parking and buffers, setbacks, height restrictions, lot coverage, the fenestration, the, I mean, there's a long list.
I would also point out, Counselor, to your point, with the, the nature of these multiple zones, larger buildings, potentially mixed use buildings, we have put the site plan review with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that was an intentional thought process, because this is probably a bit more complicated, potentially.
Well, and they're familiar with the, the process already.
I think that's absolutely the right board for it to be with.
Yeah, with having conversations about kind of fenestration, and your online or active use, or looking at storefronts. They're very familiar with all of that. So, it would just felt like it might be more in keeping with what they're already, already working on.
Thank you.
Okay, for questions?
Okay, for questions. Yeah, again, I have some thoughts, but I want to get through questions first.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you. Chairman McLean, Sam, could you just briefly touch on, you and Steve, touch on the affordability aspect of the bylaw?
Yeah, so this bylaw includes a 10% affordability. So, any, if you, I don't know, if you have a copy of it with you, but it also has a formula for-
Development over eight, eight units.
Yeah. For, it also has a formula for, for how to calculate that. So, anything over eight units, eight units or more, shall include at least 10% of the dwelling units as meeting the traditional 80% AMI affordability component. And that rounds up if there's any fraction of .5 or above. So, eight to 14 units is one, and then 15 to 24 would be two.
And that's the maximum we're allowed to put in?
That's the maximum we're allowed to put in without having an economic feasibility analysis done, even though we already have inclusionary zoning, and we've shown it to work in our area. MBTA communities and EOHLC has mandated that. Now, there's nothing, should this get approved, there's nothing that precludes us from going back and later doing an economic feasibility analysis and later updating it. You just, unfortunately, the way that their regulations are worded, you can't leave yourself that open in the bylaw. As approved, you would have to go back and, and change it.
And that's the distinction I wanted to draw, because Wakefield bylaw 19032, our inclusionary zoning bylaw, allows us to go 18%. But because of the restrictions with having to do these, and we don't have time to do the study, we can only do 10% in this, this particular bylaw.
Right. So, it won't negatively impact our SHI number. It will at least keep things, any of these potential developments that could arise from this would keep things even. And, again, we can always go back and change it if that is something that the town wishes to do, and/or the town council.
Right. Should, should they be of a certain size over eight units? But I would point out that there was no affordability in any of the three prior proposals from spring town meeting. At least here, we have the option for some of the developments to be neutral relative to 40B, if we can have some SHI units come out of it. Counselor Butler?
Sure. You know, I think probably the, the people, when this is put before them, they're going to look at it and say, like, "Oh, there's 800, like, we have 876 units here. We're going to be, you know, 3A units," and this is what people got confused about. Not confused, they just rightly so up in arms over the previous version. But this notion that there's going to be 846 existing additional units probably, almost certainly, overstates it dramatically, right? Because Audubon, you can't add 250 units there unless you're raising the 12-story building. Foundry is pretty, pretty built out now, so that's another 325 that would be, we may have more, but we're not going to have much more on top of the 65 that we're automatically adding. So, I think, I was initially coming in, once I saw the Audubon piece, thinking that I was voting against, because it felt like we were being disingenuous by carving out that 25%. With it being, that being said, I think you all have done a really good job, actually, of putting together a plan that should be very appealing for almost everyone in town. It's potentially setting up the areas around the train stations as, you know, potentially developable, but not with, you know, not with cruise ships and whatnot. But also maintaining the character of all the neighborhoods. So, done a great job of protecting the neighborhoods and putting together a plan that actually, I think, will help revitalize downtown. I don't think it's going to add a ton of new, it's not going to add a ton of apartments or a ton of condos. It's not going to add a ton more residential to, to us, which is, you know, can be problematic for some and delightful for others. But I think that this, to me, looks like a plan that you all put together really well. My apologies. I'm not sure there's a question in there.
No, that's okay. Yeah, I mean, the, the goal of the subcommittee was really to try to look at existing areas that could be included for projects that have already been done, and what is already in keeping with MBTA communities, such as the Foundry area, which the public had asked about previously. And so, that's essentially what they were-
Can, I actually, one thing, can I understand the Audubon Road, the ability to put 418 units there, is it that the apartments are really big in Audubon Road, that we only have 176 now, but we could theoretically squeeze 418?
So, the area that could be developed is really just this portion right here.
No, I mean, if it imploded and you bring the whole thing down-
Right. And so, I think that they're-
How do you get 418 units?
They're playing, under MBT, the formula for the, what MBTA communities, that EOHLC gives to us, that is the number that comes out of it.
Okay.
Whether or not it can actually be built, because, again, there's the restrictions of the wetlands, there's the restrictions of still all the Conservation Commission and all the other different components, and then also meeting parking requirements, as well as required buffers and setbacks and all of that. That, that may not even be the actual maximum of what could be realistically built there. Even the same thing goes for anything on North Ave or Greenwood. You may have the ability in that space, under MBTA communities, to build, I don't know, 10 units. However, once you factor in parking, you factor in the setbacks, you factor in the height restrictions, and lot coverage, all the different components that are in the bylaw, then, in reality, they can only build about six. So, likely, we'll, we may see some mixed use development in those areas. But, again, it really comes to how all of these projects actually boil down when they're being constructed or they're being worked out under the kind of by right component that they have to, to meet.
And I guess my last question, sorry, is I can continue on. So, now people, they can go by special permit or follow the MBTA Communities Act. I guess, I know we're sending it to the ZBA. I think now that we have the MBT Communities Act, can we make the special permitting process more painful? Like, again, making it harder for somebody to go outside this MBTA Communities Act?
Oh, well, we already have a bylaw in that area. Anyway.
It's more, I want, I want you to be miserable if you're trying to overdo the MBTA Communities Act. I want you to be like, I want, this is our plan. We want it to, we want it to, this to work. So, we don't want it to get overridden a number of times.
And at this point in time, you could go under either bylaw.
What?
You could go under, under either bylaw should, should this pass. So, the existing bylaw in the MBTA zones, in the, you know, the one we did in 2015 with the 18% affordability, that's, that's a big issue, I think, with the developer, I would think. You can maybe get more units, but maybe not. You have a more rigorous special permit process. It's longer. They can really get into the weeds more on them. So, this may, just by the fact that it's a 90-day, 90, should be approved in 90 days for my application, that's a big difference.
Yeah. It's a, it's a cost benefit analysis that they'll do, is whether they want to go through the potentially six-month process of having to go through a special permit hearing, between getting all of their application together, hiring an attorney, all of the expenses associated with that, or if they want to try to, I mean, they may end up having to hire or wanting to hire an attorney, either way. But having less time delay from when you purchase the property and start the application to when you can get your permit can be really beneficial to some developers. But I, there's nothing at this point, I believe, that is being discussed in relation to changing any part of the special permit process.
It kind of, kind of sounds like a separate issue that you might think that there should be some tweaking to existing, existing district.
Turn the screws on the other side. Like, you know, I'm not looking to make it, I think everybody understands where I am.
Yep. I think I do. Counselor Butt?
This is more, this is more a question for Steve. So, we have five weeks, about five weeks till town meeting, and one of the things that we heard about was explaining this, and even Counselor Butler just kind of talked about the confusion that people have. And so, I'm just wondering what the plan is to present this, once we, once we vote, when we all vote to send it to Planning Board?
Right.
Can we talk a little bit, because I think there were some, I think there's improvements that we can make from last time?
Love to hear them.
Yeah.
Planning Board will have to hold a public hearing by statute, okay? So, that's one thing we need to do tonight, is refer to the Planning Board, so they can get that process going. We can have another forum or two. We plan to, of course, use social media and get this out there. But we also plan to, either by postcard, or by mail, or by flyer, notify every owner in the district, in, in the four or five districts, in the four districts, I guess, so they know. But we will have more outreach. I don't know what else to say. We've been very pretty well attended at our forums. We answer every question.
You've already produced all the list of the affected-
Yeah, we have a list of the affected, well, here, but we'll make that prettier.
Right.
Yeah.
The affected streets and properties.
Right.
Yeah.
Which I don't believe was done-
Last night, no.
-previous cycle. We have a list of the grants. We've done a lot of research on the grants. We are seeing that, I know that you had brought up gas and light potential. I followed up on that. That didn't seem to be necessarily something that fell under housing. This, we're starting to see this requirement in education-related grants.
We even got a few questions at our booth in the rain at the town day.
Yeah, no, I'm, so, just to be clear, I voted for all three proposals. I am in favor of this. We need more housing. I am in favor of this. I want it to pass. So, I'm, I, I was one of the counselors that voted for all three proposals at last town meeting, and I will vote for this again. It is not an option not to have something pass, and so, I want to make sure that we explain it. So, Steve, I'd love to kind of map out. I don't know who on your team's going to take the lead on that. Like, you talk about sending-
All hands on deck, yeah.
Okay, so, postcards, like, everyone in the affected area. Like, I want, I want to know the numbers. I want to know what those postcards are saying. I want a dedicated website.
We're going to refer, we already have a, what do we call it, 40A?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already right on our, on our town website as it is, yeah.
So, I, I think we, I think we just need to be a little bit more proactive, and we being, you know, you and your team, Steve, about explaining this and answering all those questions. Yep, like, we got a lot of questions. I, I think to, you know, have the slide, the presentation that we're going to do at town day, at town meeting, you know, let's share as much of that as we can, because I just, I don't want to repeat of what happened. And I think we have to be very intentional about sharing the information. You put a lot of work into this.
Everything here is, is out there already, so, but we'll just keep pushing it.
Yeah. I, I just think we need to be more deliberate. I think we, I don't think we were as intentional last time, so let's be a little bit more intentional.
I think we've already done, and we're going to continue to be, and we're doing things that weren't done last time, with these lists of streets, like the postcards and/or flyers. And I think we're leaning now towards postcards after some public comment, which we're paying a lot of attention to. I think we're thinking of potentially publishing the maps despite the cost in the paper.
That will happen, yeah.
So, that there'll be more outreach that way. And, yeah, we, we didn't get 852 surveys by, in the middle of summer by not reaching out.
And the efforts you're doing on the ADA compliance for town meeting, if you can explain that some of those efforts you're doing.
Yeah, so, one, some things were brought up to, to kind of make sure that our, we're making this as accessible as possible, not just through having it posted online, but also meeting ADA accessibility. So, we've met with our disability coordinator for the town, our consultant who's been helping with the maps, double-checked the colors, all for color blindness, to verify that they are readily visible. We, that's part of also why we put together a list of the streets. And we are making some efforts to at least make it, to proactively make sure that it is, it is accessible to others online. I've also had a number of different people call and email and reach out, and I was on the phone with somebody for 45 minutes today talking about MBTA communities. So, I do know that people are still reaching out, and just because we have a map now does not mean that our efforts stop. The, getting people aware of what we are, what is actually being proposed, making sure that they don't think it's just that large radii, which is part of what happened at the, kind of, the first, kind of, first couple of meetings. They were concerned that it was the entire area. I think we've done a pretty good job, but that just because we've, we've gotten this far doesn't mean that things stop now. We have to keep getting the word out, keep making sure that things are readily findable online and visible, as the bylaw and the individual maps will be posted as one complete document on the town's 40A website.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counselors or comments, if we've got to that point? Counselor Chines?
Thank you. And, and again, thank you for, for the work, and, and thank you, Counselor McLean, and Counselor Vincent, and Counselor Dembrowski for your work on this as well. I, I appreciated you, Mr. Chair, starting with, you know, kind of the, the mutually disagreeable compromise comment, you know, because I, I do think that, you know, there's a lot to like in this proposal, and candidly, there's a lot that I dislike in this proposal. And, you know, similar to Counselor Butt, I voted for multiple proposals at town meeting in the spring, and that didn't mean that they were all my favorite, but it speaks to the importance of, of compliance. You know, for me, I, I think there are a couple of things in particular about the proposal itself that I'm very excited about. I, I really do appreciate the emphasis on mixed use, particularly on North Ave, and the option for mixed use on Greenwood and Albion. You know, when we talked about this in the last iteration, it was really important to me to make sure that we had a plan that supported downtown business. And I think that, you know, a lot of what we have here does that exceptionally well, and so I, I really am grateful for that. I'm also grateful that we have the affordability component back in. You know, that's something that is also really important to me, and I think it's something that, you know, we've all talked about, and we've all invested time in as a community. And so, the fact that that's a piece of it matters a lot to me. You know, there are a couple of things that I'm not wild about, and I- there are a couple of things that I'm not wild about. And I, I have to say candidly, I'm not wild about the Audubon Road District. I mean, it just feels to me to be a profoundly cynical way of checking the box on compliance without actually creating the conditions to put housing in a place where it would be anywhere accessible to public transit. Because, I mean, you can't get any further to public transit in Wakefield than Audubon Road in all likelihood. And, you know, I do think that's a shame. You know, I, I think the way that we've created the districts where we are basically rezoning areas where there already is a high degree of density that isn't going to go anywhere, you know, also strikes me as a missed opportunity. Because, you know, when I look at the challenges that we have in Wakefield with affordability, it is clear to me that one of the gaps that we have in town is the fact that we really have not developed, you know, smaller, more, you know, kind of lowercase a affordable units over time. And I think that we ignore that challenge to our peril as we think about creating a community that is going to be affordable for our children and our grandchildren, elders that want to, want to stay in Wakefield as they, as they age, and many others. And so, you know, I do hope that that's something that we keep in mind as we think about further zoning processes and as we think about the master plan as well, because I do think that that is a very significant challenge that we face as a community and one that I think we need to address as we go forward. Now, that being said, with all of that and with all of those reservations, I go back to the mutually disagreeable compromise. I land in the same place as I did with the Planning Board's proposal at Springtown Meeting and with Counsel Dabrowski's proposal at Springtown Meeting, which is that compliance is not an option. And for all of my reservations.
Non-compliance is not an option.
Non-compliance, thank you. I appreciate you correcting that. You know, for all of my reservations with one particular plan or another, the reality is that, you know, the clock has run out. And if we want to save all of the funding that we get from these grant programs, and it is significant, and I, I'm glad that we're starting to mention the schools as a piece of that as well, because the funds that we've raised through some of those grants have supported a number of incredibly important curriculum enhancements at the school, things that have really helped us kind of stand apart and raise our test scores in ways that we should be really proud of. You know, we have to pass a plan at the fall town meeting. I think the consequences of not doing so would be disastrous. So I will be voting for this at town meeting and certainly encouraging residents to, to support it as well. And I, I very, very much hope that, you know, we're able to put together a presentation and put together a communication plan that helps us get this passed. Thank you.
Any other comments from counselors?
Go for it. Talk too much already.
No, sir, no.
I just wanted to add one quick thing to Counselor Chines' comment about the lack of public transit near Audubon. There is a shuttle that has been researched or is in conversations with various different apartment developments in the area, including 200 Quanah Powhat, which is not very far from there. And should there be a development or should they have interest in it being included in something like that, I don't think we would have any objections to them being included, which could potentially tie it into existing bus stops from the existing line and/or some of the commuter rail stops.
Yeah, I, I certainly hope, regardless of MBTA communities, I think that's something that we should be looking at. I mean, you know, we talked about it being an environmental justice area. You know, it is a place where, you know, in a community where housing is not very affordable in a lot of places, it is a place where there are more affordable units there. And so I think anything that we can do to kind of tie that area into a transit network, regardless of this, is something that we should be looking at. But thank you for pointing that out and working on that, too.
Did you have something, Counselor Butler?
Oh, yeah, sorry. You know, I, alongside with Counselor Chines and Counselor Butt, voted for both proposals at the Springtown Meeting. I was probably less like euphoric about it and more feeling like we were facing the barrel of a gun from the MBTA in terms of grants. I still feel that way in terms of we are facing, you can't say no to this. And especially now, because by the way, again, for all of the uproar that was raised at the previous town meeting, I don't believe, was I, was I a counselor at that one?
You were.
You were.
That was my dog roll. All right. I think for all the hubbub, what we have to get through to the people is, I know we, you know, Counselor Butt had said we need to develop more housing in this community. This is not the plan that's going to develop a whole lot more housing in this community. This is not going to add a ton of units. Whatever side of the, like, you know, the feeling of, in terms of increasing affordability in the town, I do think we need, we need a more revitalized downtown. But this is, this is going to enhance certain areas in terms of revitalization, but in terms of adding a bunch of units, this is not that plan. Like, voting for this will not get you another thousand units of housing. Whether we need it or not is not like, you know, is a topic for discussion for another day. But this plan is really going to maintain Wakefield pretty much as is and allow us to still participate in the MBTA grants. And probably we'll even enhance things with the developments on, potential development on Albion and Greenwood and North Ave. And the other two areas are, they're pretty much not anymore.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair McLean. The town didn't really need this plan. The town has made tremendous progress on our housing inventory, especially going back to 2015 when we had that inclusionary zoning bylaw. If you look at the numbers of our housing inventory from that time period to present, it's grown tremendously. I'll give you an example on, on your subsidized housing inventory numbers, which once again would represent 18% of the total numbers of growth, because we have 18% in our inclusionary zoning. In 2014, we were at 6% on the way to 10%. 40B started in 1969. So over the course of 40-some years, we got to 6%. We are now on the verge of knocking on the door of 9%. So in the last 10 years, if you look at the first 43 years, we grew 1% every seven years. Over the last 10 years, we've grown 1% in our SHI numbers every three and one-third years, because in large measure of the inclusionary zoning that we put in place. We also now have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we're on the verge of putting together a new housing production plan. So what this, what this plan does for me is it augments what we're doing by having the affordable housing component in it while we maintain the character of the neighborhood and we continue to, to allow ourselves to get grants. And I agree with Counselor Butler, it's not going to lead to a whole bunch of, of new housing. But we, many other municipalities probably needed something like this to kind of boost them and to increase their housing inventory. But because of the decision, in my opinion, that town leading made back in 2015, we have greatly increased our housing inventory. And the SHI numbers are indicative of that increase that we've seen. So that's why I think, obviously, we have to comply. And we tried to put something together that we think would placate folks at town meeting if we can explain it the right way. And the other part about this is who's doing the presentation at town meeting?
Well, I think Sam will do the primary one, and then we'll jump in.
And then we, being the members of the town council, will get up and, believe me, we will be, I mean, the grants, when I said all hands on deck, every day, and they know this because I badger them, and I say, here's another DESI grant that we could lose, because I look up the language to see, you must be MBTA compliant. They go, here's another one. So this all hands on.
I can actually vouch for that from this morning when Counselor Vincent and I were at the Dolmire School.
Yeah, I threw three in a row, right, at Doug Lyons, and said, have we applied for these? And we need to know if we've applied for these. Because I think when we start affecting the education and, and the well-being of our children, I think folks in the community are going to say, we cannot afford to lose the opportunity to get educational-type grants, for instance, which, which really does affect the quality of life for our residents. So we're going to be working on this nonstop between now and whatever date that is, November 16.
November 16. Plus, you're not going to have 200 people from the West Side showing up and claiming. So like, you've got that going for you as well.
Yeah. Very true.
I just also wanted to add something. I agree, this is not visionary. We have done a lot of work. We are doing something to be in compliance. We are doing it to not lose. I'd love to find out how much money it is. It's great to have a list of grants, but I do think the number's pretty significant. And something that Sam mentioned at the start of her presentation that I don't want to lose sight of is that, once we pass this, we will have an option of a grant program that has $15 million in it. And so there are a lot of things that we still want to do as a town that with grant funding we can do. And that is not available to us if we don't pass this. And so I'm really excited about, I know it was just announced like last week.
Right, yeah, thank you.
So I don't think there's any specifics, but, you know, it's $15 million. There's, 177 communities have to comply with this. We are not special. 75 have already done this. We are not leading the way on anything, but we are doing this because it's the law, because we need to comply, and we don't want to lose out on a lot of grant funding that we receive as a town. That we've worked really hard to apply for those grants and get grant funding.
And we've been working these numbers, correct, Town Administrator?
Yes. Yep.
And I believe, what's our current drumroll total for the last?
Well, if you look at everything that, you know, has been kind of pulled into the, because the list has changed, you know, we can identify, you know, $4.4 million worth of grants, you know?
So I wasn't too far off when I said it after last town meeting, when I said.
But this doesn't, and that, this doesn't even include the Catalyst Grant, which is new, and we could get money there.
Yep.
It is interesting to see in some of the DESI grants, which is new language that, that came out, is that when you apply, you need to certify that you will be compliant with the MBTA Communities Act, which is something that I think if you're not compliant, I can say right now we are compliant, because we're compliant till the end of the year. So at this moment, we are. I cannot in good conscience say we will be, because we don't know what's going to happen at an open town meeting and, you know, and after. So it's, it's, that was very interesting to see that language in grants through the Department of Education and the secondary education, not mentioned in the original draft that we saw a couple of years ago, or maybe three years ago now, so.
And when we look at current grants that we've been allocated, two in particular, the Hopkins Street pedestrian improvements, we were allocated $571,913. We currently spent zero of that. Is that right? I think that's what we looked at.
I think maybe they've done some engineering.
They've done some engineering, but it's not, it's not, it's not a lot.
Right. So that's potentially at risk. The $79,000 for the housing production plan, we've only spent $4,671 of that. And if you remember, Massachusetts immediately took away Milton's $100,000 C-WALL grant in January after they weren't compliant in December. So those are two grants right there, which, that we've currently been allocated that add up to over $650,000 that we could end up, end up losing. In addition to these other grants that we talked about that we could be prevented from applying for, like the DESI grants, these are grants that have currently been allocated to us that we could possibly lose. And we're combing through these as well to see what the exact figures are going to be.
Steve, do your numbers include the Albion Cultural Exchange underutilized properties grant?
It, it does show that we've applied for it.
Okay. I, I'd have to double-check with Aaron, but I believe that we might have already gotten that one.
No, it's a million dollars. I would have known.
It's not, okay.
I would have known on that one.
We were going back and forth talking about it.
We're waiting.
So, but that is another one that we would not, no longer be.
That would be, right.
Love for you to share with us.
For underutilized properties.
We don't know yet.
Sorry.
It's in there, potential.
Yeah, we were just going back and forth about it, talking about that one as well.
I hope, I hope I'm wrong and you're right.
Who knows? Maybe I know something.
Maybe you do.
And then, can I just add one more thing? And this is not counting our chickens before they're hatched. Is that the term?
Yes.
I'm not a farmer. But, you know, I, I got really excited about you talking about the potential shuttle that people are exploring. And, you know, what I, what I ever tell everyone, I moved to Wakefield because of the commuter rail, because I knew I'd always use it, and I do still commute to the city. And so we had talked about briefly about a transit committee. And I just think this gives us an opportunity of, as we're doing these changes, to really talk about transit, microtransit in our town, the buses that come through here, the commuter rail, people that drive to Oak Grove. People move here because of, we are an MBTA community. And I think we need to really be deliberate about thinking about that and how that impacts a lot of the decisions that we're doing. Once, once we pass this, but I just wanted to bring that back on the radar. I think I've mentioned it as one of our priorities of some sort of transit committee. And so when you mentioned a shuttle, I got really excited.
Yeah, Stonem had just recently, was awarded a grant and is launching their program. Anybody can take there. And it's an on-demand rideshare-type shuttle that connects to other forms of transit in their area. But that is, is open to the public. I'm sure if you, I don't have any links or anything, but I'm sure you can look it up online. But they were very excited to, to launch that. In the first year, it's only in Stonem, and then in subsequent years, because it's a pilot program. And in subsequent years, other communities can tie in. So that's also something that could be potentially looked at in the long run.
That's great. I didn't know about that. Thank you.
Another comment?
Just on that, I, I do hope that's something, I mean, one of the things when we've talked about microtransit as well, we've talked about kind of connecting with other communities. And, you know, I mean, I live within like a spitting distance of both the Stonem and Redding lines. And, you know, there's nothing that we're doing here and nothing that we're talking about here that is unique just to Wakefield. I mean, they're having the same conversations in Stonem and Redding and Wakefield and Melrose. And so I think to the extent, and Mr. Mayo, maybe I could kind of ask you and your team to kind of spend some time on this, I would love to see if this is an area of, you know, inter-municipal cooperation that we could focus on as a way of just kind of combining our resources and making sure that this is something that's available, you know, as broadly as possible in Wakefield.
We can do that.
And let's not forget, there is a shuttle requirement that will be coming out of the large development by the lake. That was part of the conditions, I believe. So we'll see what happens with that. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair McLean. Just the other thing I wanted to note, and we've talked about this at the public hearing, Milton is currently paying $275,000 for their legal fees. Although I listened to the oral argument this morning, the attorney was very good. Plus, they're paying $940 an hour for any, anything that exceeds the $275,000. And the other thing that's really relevant is Milton officials are still trying to work on a compliance plan. Even though they're fighting the state on this, they still recognize that they need to take the lead on preparing a plan, because one of the things that could happen to them is that the state could decide to appoint a master to make, if they lose, to make a plan for them. And then they don't end up being able to make their own plan. So I think it's noteworthy that they're paying that kind of money in legal fees, and at the same time, they're trying to work on compliance.
And just, sorry, just.
No, you're, you're recognized.
Just to explain, just to explain a little bit of what Counselor Vincent said, Milton has a trolley, that, a trolley that leads into the Green Line. We have two commuter rail stations and buses in our town. We are not Milton. We are very different than Milton. And that's what they're fighting it on. So just wanted to clear that, that we, we are different. I don't think we could get away with saying we're not an MBTA community with our two commuter rail stations and our buses that go through here. Almost three if we caught, if we count the Melrose train station, which I hadn't heard us considering that before, so.
I'm just talking about how much they're paying in their legal fees.
Yeah.
The Melrose station is actually on Erin Kokeinda's initial application. It was, it's, it's a half a mile from any train station. So that's, that was in play, although it wasn't discussed at all during the last iteration. We did look at it, but it just didn't work. Any other questions, comments from counselors? Just a couple follow-up comments based on what I've heard. I would, I would say that Audubon is not a desert and is not on the Canadian border. You know, if, if there's 25% allowed and there's cynicism in that and it's still compliance, then the cynicism is not ours. It is something that's allowed by the law. We have other buildings out there. We had talked about this in the open space plan. Maybe it will be such a district in the future, maybe not. We've got 14 Audubon, which is already, I believe, other than the affordable units, high rent, probably higher rent apartments. So it's not like there's nothing like, you know, this out there. But to, to the point that Counselor Butt made, I really don't see anything happening with that building. I don't, I don't see those, those lower-income units.
I think Butler probably is what you meant.
Butler, not Butler.
I meant Audubon, yeah.
Yeah.
But he made that point.
Oh, you made that point. Yeah. Well, you guys are all making good points today. Fortunately, we don't have seven. It's enough business with just five, right? But I would say that, you know, we're trying to be compliant. We're trying to hit that, you know, mutually disagreeable figure. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it is, you know, if it's compliant for the Commonwealth, then, you know, I believe we should take advantage of that 25%. I don't think we've ignored affordable housing units. I do think it's a shame that the housing production plan was allowed to expire in the past. But I think Counselor Vincent and I have certainly done everything we can to formulate the the Affordable Housing Trust, to push to get the HPP back in place so that we'll have a little more hopeful leverage in the future on 40B through the creation of more SHI units. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I mean, I probably, I'm not sure if I'll steal Jonathan's thunder here. I do think like, let's, let's not dance around it. Including Audubon Road is like highly not in line with the spirit of the MBTA Communities Act. It is, it is, yes, it is using a technicality and it is, it is legal and it is, I guess, appropriate. But, you know, I don't want to, I don't want us to pretend, I'm a big fan of not pretending things. And I don't think, I think Audubon Road, including Audubon Road is not like a great, it's a great plan for solving, by the way, what was not a great law to begin with. But we shouldn't think of it as like really us putting forth a housing, you know, a housing plan to meet the MBTA.
I think I said I don't think anything's going to happen there.
No, nothing, no, nothing's going to happen there. But I think it's also like, I think it's disingenuous for us to say that we don't think that it's, that we think like we're fully on board with.
Well, I don't think it's cynical if it's compliant.
It's cyni, oh, it can be cynical in compliance, it just, this, that's crazy that you don't think cynicism and compliance go hand in hand a lot of the time.
Don't get me crazy.
There you go.
There you go. All right, I entertain a motion that we submit this proposal to the planning board.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Sherry, that's five zero. Item, thank you very much Samantha for all your hard work and all your outreach because we did get 852 responses in the summer based largely on your efforts and the efforts of the crowded town hall. And I thank you all.
Like I said, we're not done yet. We still have some more outreach to work on and we'll get to working on those postcards as well as getting all of the maps and the bylaw updated on the website so it's readily accessible. But if you have any other questions, you can always feel free to reach out to me directly.
Thank you very much. Item seven, licensing. We have, appears that we have a request for a license for timeless fine, timeless fine jewelry at 55 Albion Street.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve a secondhand dealer license for timeless fine jewelry.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Butt. Any discussion about this license? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? Sherry, that's five zero. Item eight, we have three appointments tonight. The first item A is Human Rights Commission. A student representative, I believe, is being recommended by, by the superintendent, by Dr. Lloyd.
I'm trying to get, will you put Sherry back up for us? Thank you.
Do we need Sherry for?
No, I just wanted to make, just she was there in case you needed her.
Hi, Sherry.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to appoint Gilak Patel as the student representative to the Human Rights Commission.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Butt. Any discussion? Councilor Vincent?
Yes, thank you, Chair McLean. Sherry, can you clarify a couple of things for me? After we appoint this, the student representative tonight, the HRC will have five voting members?
Yes, that's correct.
And the clergy position is still vacant?
Yes.
Do we, do we know why the clergy can, position is vacant when it should have been filled back in the spring?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. The, the last round of, before the spring, the last round, there was a clergy council that was appointed. He went to a few meetings and then resigned, I'm not sure why. And they just have never filled that.
So normally the council on clergy makes a recommendation to the town council?
Exactly.
All right, and then that would still leave five vacancies as far as members of the public for the HRC, because I think they're allowed to have 11 voting members?
Sounds right, yeah.
And this would just put them at five, missing the clergy and the other five members of the public. Okay, thank you.
So, so as liaison, I just want to say is that the student representative had come to the last meeting, already really engaged, so we just need to vote to appoint her and then she'll go get sworn in so she can be a voting member. And Councilor Vincent, you are correct, the Human Rights Commission has some vacancies. If anyone is interested, please apply. Send in your application, they do really great work. An event coming up on Thursday that I'll talk about a little later, but please apply. They do great work, a great volunteer group in town.
Councilor Chair?
Maybe through Mr. Chair to Mr. Mayo, could, could we call off with the council on clergy?
Yeah, I already made a note, I'm having breakfast with one of them on Wednesday.
I know that's sort of a temporary person assigned and then I think the plan was it was to transition to someone else, but yeah, it would be great if we could close that gap.
Okay, I believe we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? Sherry, that's five zero. Item B is Environmental Sustainability Committee. I believe we have one person applying for an open position.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to appoint Rebecca Nernberger to the Environmental Sustainability Committee.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Butt. Any discussion on the application? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? That's five zero. Sherry, councilor?
Go ahead.
Okay. Item C, we have Economic Development Council. We have multiple applicants for positions and as the liaison, I was going to.
As, as one of the liaisons, can I ask that we postpone this to our next meeting for the vote?
Certainly.
We, we had actually said that we would do it at our October 21st meeting anyway, so if we could just add it to the next agenda.
I have no problem with that. Anybody on the council have a problem with that? I don't see anybody with an issue, that's great. Thank you very much. Councilor Butt. Item nine is donations. We have a donation for the council, for the council on aging.
Mr. Chair, move to approve a donation, donations in the amount of $600 to the Council on Aging from various donors with thanks.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? Sherry, that two is five zero. We have donation two, library?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to accept donations in the amount of $50,761.08 to the BB Library from various donors with thanks as well.
Seconded.
Impressive sum. Motion seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? Sherry, again, we have five zero. Approval of minutes, September 23rd, 2024. I, I will add a friendly amendment, Sherry, because I assume, I assume I'll get a motion, but I was just hoping you'd put the closing time because I think it was 7:18 PM. That being a record, I, I wanted it so reflected. Other than that, with, with that small addition, do I have a motion?
You have a motion with the correction of the adjournment time at 7:18. Although in fairness, I would probably trust Sherry's time.
I think the time wasn't, the time wasn't listed, wasn't it?
It was at 7:19.
Oh, 7:19. All right, well, I want 7:18. And I'm chair.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. All those in favor? I'm not asking for discussion, okay. That's five zero. Sherry, thank you. Announcements? I know we have at least one from Councilor Butt because she was saying she had something for this Thursday at the Americal.
Sure, yeah, so the Human Rights Commission is celebrating Indigenous culture through song and dance this Thursday at seven at the Civic Center. It's going to be a great program, so if you can make it, please join. Just some other things to talk about. We mentioned before, but WAVE is having their annual 5K on October 19th. More information on their website about that. Let's see, are you going to talk about fire prevention week?
No, but I'm going to talk about the firefighter's 5K race.
Okay, then I, then I, I will, I was just looking at our website and this week is Fire Prevention Week and there will be an open house at our fire stations Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. So check that out. I've actually never been inside the Greenwood Fire Station, so I think I'm going to add that to my agenda to check it out. And then I'm on a theme this week of really thanking our volunteers, like who serve on the HRC and like who serve on the Environmental Sustainability Committee and the Envir, the Economic Development Committee that we talked about at the start of the meeting. Residents in Wakefield had an EV showcase yesterday and it was just a great annual event that they have done. I learned a lot, saw Councilor's Chine's car there and other people's car, but just really appreciate all the work that the volunteers do in town. And thank you WCAT for filming that yesterday and looking forward to seeing some of that in a, once it airs, so that's it, that's everything.
Okay, Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair McLean. Thank you for mentioning the open house on the 12th. I'm going down to DC to meet my son's girlfriend's parents for the first time because we're hoping our son finally proposes. So I forgot about the 12th.
Sure he appreciates.
He watches these too. He's been dating her five years, so he deserves the pressure. On October 26th, the Wakeville Firefighters Relief Association is having a 5K at 10 o'clock and that's going to start over on Church Street. The other thing, couple of things I wanted to mention is that we have an Americal Division flag indoor that actually we possessed for a number of years, but now we've had it framed, as you would, with a military flag. And we're going to have a little ceremony somewhere around Veterans Day. When you walk in the Americal, on your right, you'll see the, the flag. But we're going to have a little ceremony to dedicate that flag either on Veterans Day or a couple of days before Veterans Day. This Wednesday, the Rededication Day meeting for the Soldiers and Sailors Memorial is going to take place. Right now, we don't have any formalized committee. Pretty much the rededication is Mr. Mayo and myself, but we invite interested parties. We are probably going to have this on June 1st of 2025. I will let folks know that the AP History students at the high school are going to do a synopsis of the 20 battles that are listed on the memorial. And Doug, Dr. Lyons told me today, that's actually going to count as a civics project for them this year. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee is going to have its second meeting on October 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vincent. Councilor Chine?
Thank you. So first of all, I want to echo my thanks to the Environmental Sustainability Committee for the EV showcase, which gave me a reason to clean my car, though in fairness, I probably should have had reason to do that long before this past weekend, but it was a very nice day. And also great to see the, the gas and light department there with some of their EVs that they have, including a plug-in hybrid electric bucket truck, which is in service and doing some great work. And so just a really good example, I think, of, of how, you know, the technology is kind of changing, you know, really kind of beneath our feet almost every day and how, you know, some of the, the things that we, we didn't envision, you know, a couple of years ago or even a couple of months ago are kind of coming into fruition. But nonetheless, a few other things to highlight. There is going to be basically a neighborhood meeting for the high school project coming up on Thursday at 7:00. That's at the Savings Bank Theater in the high school. Actually, it might be at the cafeteria, but same entrance. Thank you, at the theater. Thank you, Ian. But, you know, good opportunity for certainly kind of a butters to the high school to hear more about the project and also share any concerns that they have and obviously open to the public as large as well. On the topic of our schools, it is marching band season, which is one of the things that I love about the fall. And so I did want to highlight, first of all, just the great results that the Wakefield High School Marching Band has had so far in their competitions. But also to say, we have two Saturday competitions coming up at Landrigan Field on the 19th and on the 26th, both Saturdays. And so great opportunities to cheer on our warriors, but also to see a lot of other great bands and always a good time. The Health and Human Services Department will be having one more flu clinic coming up on the 26th from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Americal. I know they've done a lot of flu shots so far at Town Day, at farmers markets and other places, but if you haven't had a flu shot yet, you can sign up for that. And then finally, just wanted to mention on the theme of road races, that the cross-country boosters will be doing their turkey trot on Thanksgiving morning around the lake. So you can get ready for that, you know, train by following the WAVE race and the firefighters' memorial race and you'll be in great shape for Thanksgiving and able to start the day with some exercise before your turkey. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other announcements? Moving on, item 12 matters, none anticipated for agenda. Just a couple very quickly, just a quick update on solar. As many of you recall, last April, at the meeting I affectionately referred to as ARPA 2, we had a proposal from yours truly that we do a half a roof on the Galvin Middle School. That did not pass, but at that time, the town council voted to have a warrant on this fall town meeting relative to making the solar-ready Galvin Middle School fully solar. We have been endeavoring to make that happen, put out an RFP, had 10 inquiries according to DPW, seven of them were deemed to be serious. There was a walkthrough that was a requirement to bid. We had two walkthroughs and we have received two bids and we're analyzing them right now. So we fully anticipate that that warrant will, will come before town meeting to make the Galvin solar, speaking of electric. And that's one item. And I think Town Administration, you had one other just brief item?
I think that was it, solar. We might, we might have a.
Didn't, didn't we have something from WCAT?
Oh, yes. WCAT, it is, Ian, why don't you come and give us a little explanation on this? Because I completely flew out of my head thinking about the train and, the train and, the train and.
Solar and.
Solar and, the MBTA went right out of my head.
So it's Community Media Day is a recognition of everything that community media does for our local towns and governments and nonprofit groups and things like that. So we would just ask that the town council would, you know, just send a little proclamation that says we support Community Media Day.
And if you'd like, I can read last year and we could, if the chair, if the town council would vote to have the chair sign that, we can take care of that.
I think I was, I wouldn't say that that's a springing a big surprise on this town council, so let's, let's, let's hear it.
Whereas the sharing of ideas and information helps to build common understanding and common values within a community. And whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy functioning of our community. And whereas community media organizations provide a means for diverse communities to tell their stories, hear each other's stories and create new stories together. And whereas community media organizations provide information to the community that is not covered by mainstream commercial media. And whereas community, community, community media organizations provide people with the skills necessary for the creation, sharing and consumption of knowledge and ideas through media. And whereas community media is an important resource for participating in local democratic policies and processes. And whereas community media connects community organizations, schools and local governance to their constituents. And whereas in many communities, people are not aware of the diverse and valuable programming on public education and government access channels or community radio channels. And whereas communities will benefit from increased general awareness of viewing audiences for and creators of media content created by and for the community. Now therefore, I, Michael McLean, Chair of the Wakefield Town Council, Town of Wakefield, Massachusetts proclaim, October, is it 7th?
Uh, Town Council agenda is probably.
Is it 20th? It's on the 20th? October, October 20th, 2024, as Community Media Day or whatever day they, they tell me about later, within Wakefield. And all people hereby called upon to promote the importance of community media, training available at Wakefield Community Access Television, WCT and programming available on WCAT.
It is October 20th.
Is it October 20th?
According to Google.
Okay.
Yeah.
They keep the same day every year.
Yeah, we try to.
And that had, that had to jump in today because our next meeting is the 21st.
Do I have a motion to accept a proclamation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, with great appreciation and respect for the tremendous work that WCAT does in our community, move to approve the proclamation as read by Mr. Mayo and authorize the chair to sign it.
And I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Butt. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't hear that. Could you read that again? You're going to do that on the bonds too.
You can watch it on the replay.
All those in favor? All opposed?
This is.
Ooh, this is in smaller print than the bonds.
That's by Sherry. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, just one other thing under matters not anticipated, really a question on the agenda. Do we have a sense as to when, and this may be a question from Mr. Mayo, do we have a sense as to when the Open Space and Recreation Plan is coming back to us?
I defer to Steve.
We are waiting to hear back from, from the Concom. We, we talked to their clerk, and I guess she'll let us know when they're ready, right?
Yeah, that, yeah, we are, we're waiting for them.
They're waiting on their consult.
It would be nice to get that done by the end of the year, so if there's anything we can do to push it along, since it was a couple of meetings that go now.
I mean, it feels like they weren't, I mean, they were edits, I mean, you know, it was just really, sort of perfeiting a document more than anything else.
Bring my coffee up tomorrow morning from building and stop there on my way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Entertained a motion to adjourn at this point?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All opposed? Sherry, that is also five zero. I will close this meeting at 8:53 PM.